Starting the recording. And Mayor, we are live, so whenever you're ready.
Thank you so much. Good evening, Happy New Year, and welcome to our first study session for 2021 of the Mayor and Board of Trustees for the Village of Woodridge. Today is Thursday, January 21st, 2021, and the time is 6:00 PM, and we will call the meeting to order. If our clerk would please call the rule.
Trustee Hendricks.
Present.
Trustee Blair. Trustee Martinez.
Present.
Trustee Abbott.
Present.
Trustee Page.
Present.
And Mayor.
Present. The purpose of the Village Board Study Session this evening is to continue our Village Board's policy discussion on private property drainage concerns and to review potential village cost-sharing programs. If staff is ready with their presentation this evening.
Mayor Cunningham, Director Bethel, and Building Commissioner Eric Allwin will be presenting this evening.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you Administrator Stonish. Before we get started tonight, I was going to kind of just briefly lay out the plan that Eric and Allwin and I were going to be following, and Phil Green will be driving the bus for here on this PowerPoint. If we can go to the next slide, please, Phil. So, we were going to do just a brief recap, since there's a little bit of time that had passed from that November 19th session. We've got some additional background data that had been requested from some of the other DuPage communities who have similar programs. Some additional information on Woodridge as it relates to previous drainage investigations that we've done, as well as just some topographical data on the village. And then, based on questions or comments, or just further deliberations, some additional recommended changes if the Mayor and Board were to want to move forward with formally drafting a program for further review. And then, depending on feedback or the desire of the Mayor and Board, we had a couple of questions there, just to help give staff direction to move forward if that was the plan. So, is there any questions before we get started on that outline? All right, Phil, if you can, I'm going to have you advance a couple slides here if go a little further. Okay, so, just to start here for recap, so generally, we get about 30 to 40 drainage concerns a year that come up, and ranges anything from standing water to soft ground to a neighbor, creating issues on a person's property. These come into community development to start, and then Public Works and our engineering staff get pulled in to help investigate those issues. So, we've got a general response we use, and not always, but some of them are very straightforward, some of them are more complex, but we generally run through this list of items on the bottom to help review the property, look at the history, look at permitted or non-permitted improvements, or work done by neighbors, and what might be creating those issues. Do you want to go to the next slide there, Phil? And so then, what we try to do is give some suggestions to residents of things that they can do on their property. Again, these are just options, unless there is code compliance at the heart of the issue, it's ultimately up to the property owner if they decide that they want to move forward with some of these suggestions or not, and then we try to provide additional guidance and feedback as may be needed going forward. In the next slide there, just some of the other actions and follow-up as far as putting some of those thoughts and options in writing for them to follow up on, again, talking to neighbors, and sometimes there's work in the right-of-way that we can do that'll help promote good drainage on private property as well. Next slide there, Phil. And so, there was a request, generally just seeing is there more that the village could do for residents, and there are other cost-sharing programs we have, both on public improvements as well as private property improvements. Just for context, that it's not unusual for the village to go down this path. And then, we had gone out to DuPage mayors and managers and asked if other communities had similar, or any type of cost-sharing programs, if they could share those. There were 10 in total, nine, one was like the village where it primarily works in the right-of-way, and then, other than that, it's just educational guidance. So, when we talk about nine, it's the nine communities that have programs that are maybe more in line with what the Mayor and Board were envisioning. So, all right, if we can go to the next slide, Phil. And so, I'm going to briefly go through these, since these are just general framework items that we're going to talk about, and the program has been finalized, we can come back to them as needed. But generally, what we had laid out for eligibility a couple months ago was it'd be single-family properties, they would be eligible to use the program once, kind of the eligibility standard, you'd have two properties with standing water for at least 72 hours, sump-pump-down-spout discharges, again, not typically covered elsewhere, and other community examples, we recommend it did not be covered here. And then, the original property conditioning to be reestablished, and so, we're going to cycle back to that. I know it was an item we talked about last time, just to give some additional clarification, as well as that suggestion on the two contiguous properties for 72 hours, we were going to circle back to that a little bit later in some of the clarification. Phil, if you want to go to the next slide? Kind of the next major category we had talked about last time was cost-sharing parameters, and again, there's a variety of cost-sharing amounts in those other communities, by property, by project, combination of those two factors. And so, what we had recommended, looking for middle-of-the-road of what was out there, and our experience in what a project could entail, was 50% of $5,000, and again, that's one of those items for clarification, we're going to circle back to in a few minutes. And then, as far as eligibility, some communities limited it to storm sewers only. What we thought would make the most sense is leaving it open to a whole variety of improvements. We listed rain gardens, dry wells, swales, berms, storm pipes, and other improvements that might be requested on a case-by-case basis, just so residents would have the option to come up with different alternatives, and what may be most effective or cost-efficient on that property and project. Want to go to the next slide there, Phil? And so, this slide, we did not get as much into, and this was getting into how would the program actually work in terms of processing the agreements, who would be decision-making authority, how would the concept plans be reviewed? So, maybe just in the interest of time, and since this will really be highly dictated by the final program, I was going to skip through this section. Actually, Phil, one more slide, I think it's still program process. So, that is probably a good checkpoint of the old material before we start to get into the new. Any questions at that point, before we move into the new stuff?
Any board members, have any questions? Okay, thank you, thank you, Chris.
All right, thanks, Phil. If you can go maybe two more slides, and it's going to say started, there we go, right there. So, just, I think one of the questions that had come up was some more details, there'd been a spreadsheet we put together describing those other communities' programs, and so, we went back to get some additional detail on three common questions of, you have these programs, but what projects are residents implementing there? How many of them do you do a year, and how much are you spending? And so, there was a follow-up spreadsheet that was put together, but just to summarize these items, probably the most common that all the communities came back with, they are private storm sewer, it's usually six inches or smaller pipes, as well as swales and regrading. There was one community who had mentioned a dry well. And just for context, a dry well is typically a cube, almost, you can think of, that's excavated underground, and then filled with stone, and then you'd cover the top layer still with topsoil and grow grass, and you create a void underneath that water can filter down into and hold temporarily to keep that away from the surface. But, again, most towns, it was storm sewers and swales. These next two items, number of projects and average cost, highly variable on both. And you had towns that shared, they do anywhere, any range from 1 to 11 in a year. Some noted they have people come forward, and they work their costs, and then don't go forward actually toward implementation, but I think a fair number, on average, most towns were doing, that had established programs, you're probably looking at six or seven a year. Average cost, and again, both on average projects and cost here, again, the village really has discretion, and this is just for context, and however, the Mayor and Board might want to set that going forward. But on cost, again, highly variable, a lot of ranges, most of them had cap cost, usually around $5,000, but I think the average village cost in most of those projects came out to about $3,000, and again, depending on what type of work was being done, and scope and number of homes, but about $3,000. Want to go to the next slide there, Phil? And maybe this is a good point, too. In terms of any questions as it related to those other community programs, or other questions or data that might be helpful from those other towns, or maybe just questions you have, and we can try to clarify them right here on the spot.
Madam Mayor? Yes, please. Trustee Page?
Chris, or Director Bethel, what is the average cost of a project in total? I know what you told us what the village cost approximately could be, but if I was a homeowner, what's the average cost of one of these projects?
Yeah, and most of the other communities are 50/50 cost-share, and that's where, again, it gets a little bit tricky, because the villages' share might have been 3,000, but if you had two property owners, it would only have been $1,500 apiece, or if it's three property owners, only $1,000 apiece. We're going to come back to that a little bit later, but what we did as an alternative for the Board is broke down by different type of project, what a 50/50 cost-share might be, which I think gets to the question you're asking of, well, ultimately, how much does it cost to do a swale? And so, we've tried to come up with some estimates of what that might be.
And you'll probably get to this, is the 50/50 match per project or per homeowner?
So, last time, the way we had laid that out, the 5,000 was per project, and again, a minimum number of property owners working together, and the logic was, is here's a dollar figure, more of you may work together, and that reduces your part of the 50/50, but it's ultimately capped. In this case, again, what that cost might be, again, just has a lot of variability on property to property, and if there is additional design work they need to do, or there's ancillary costs they might have to absorb for landscaping that they want to reestablish, but just maybe to throw it out there, if this helps, if they're going to do a swale, I think we had laid out an approximate cost of about $1,500. Yeah, so a swale, we said about $1,500, so for a homeowner, it would be about $750 would be their share, which in our experience should cover most swale-type projects.
Thank you.
Does that help, or not quite hitting your question?
No, that helps a lot, and using your example of a $1,500 swale, it's a $750 cost to the homeowner, but technically, it's 750 divided in half, because it has to be two or more properties, correct?
If, and that was one of the things we had laid out, we thought instead of having that $5,000 cap for the project, by having it set up individually, I shouldn't say individually, by project type, 1,500 or 750 apiece for a swale, if the Mayor and Board wanted to say, "We want individual properties to be able to do this, not necessarily with two or three as a minimum," it probably provides more flexibility in that as an option.
Thank you, it helps.
Madam Mayor?
Trustee Martinez, please.
Director Bethel, you may cover this later, or you may have already covered it over the last four months, but I find one of the specific situations here, which we have received public comments on, deal with a home on Autumn Drive that is impacted from what appears to be from drainage from above, from the properties on Hickory Court. But, I sort of have two questions, and again, if you're going to cover it later, I'll just wait. Number one, the cost associated with fixing anything. How many of these costs really include structural damage to the house? I'm kind of sure, are you talking about for that? Because from what I hear regarding a particular house in Autumn Drive, there is structural damage, and I've seen it to the house. And secondly, how much research has the village done regarding the Hickory Court, properties above Autumn Drive?
So, maybe to answer those in two parts, I think the villages' work on Autumn Drive has been wide-ranging and going back over a decade, as far as research and follow-up and a storm sewer improvement that was done out in the street in 2014. So, I don't know if myself, or Eric, I'm sorry, Building Commissioner Allwin, or Administrator Stonish can talk to those specifics tonight, but that's something we can certainly provide information on. This, again, the way we had approached this, it's a generally applicable cost-sharing program. When you start to maybe get into structural-related issues, it may be a unique factor that might merit a separate conversation, but it wasn't something that was considered as a part of a cost-sharing program to alleviate drainage concerns. Maybe, and you teed it up perfectly.
And that's the reason I asked the question. Because, in my opinion, having read all the correspondence and seen some of the problems, I think we're dealing more than just minor water accumulation and penetration. And again, how much research has the village done in 40 years regarding the properties on Hickory Court?
Right, and again, outside of a cost-sharing program, quite a bit of research as it relates to Autumn Drive, but the part of the cost-sharing program, not something that was specifically referenced here in the PowerPoint. But, you do tee up the next section that Phil has teed up here on the screen, as it relates to elevation changes, and given that that was one of the questions that came up from the last session, that was something that we did, is looked across the topography of the entire community, looking at, and in that case, Autumn and Hickory, it's about approximately an eight-foot difference from yard to yard, and there's about 400 properties across the community that have an eight-footer greater yard-to-yard topographical difference. What we did not include on the exhibit that was sent out, is that there are other areas that have greater changes in grade, and just to use one example here, is generally talking about the area from Woodridge Drive to 63rd Street on the northern part of the community, those are long streets that, again, in the case of Bradley, it's about a 26-foot drop. On MacArthur, which is a longer street, it's about a 60-foot drop, and you don't have eight-foot property to property, it happens more gradually over a longer stretch, but, again, good examples of when one property owner maybe makes a change inadvertently can create a much larger impact because of the larger drainage area that is coming through each property. And there's some in that area, like Winston Drive, where they have an eight-foot drop behind them, so from the street adjacent, but then also on the street they live on is making about a 50-foot topographical change, so water's actually coming in two directions, needing to traverse across those properties. So, again, we stuck with, at least on the map, so it wouldn't become unwieldy, was just showing, again, similar to Hickory and Autumn, that here's areas that have about an eight-foot or greater differential from property to property only. Which tied into the next one, and this is something we had B here, drainage inspections, this is not something we had ever put those two together before, and so, after the Mayor and Board had raised it, we did an overlay and said, "All right, we have these topographical differences, let's take the drainage complaints that have come in from the last five years and overlay them, and see, do those match up?" And in some cases, yes, I'd say for the vast majority, there wasn't necessarily a nexus between those two factors. Now, again, something we did not include on the map, the most common complaint we get is actually sump-pump discharge, so property to property, that somebody has a sump-pump discharge right on their property line, it's impacting their neighbor, there's about, I think over the last five years, it was about 190 of those that have come in, so even more than just drainage concerns is the sump-pump item that came in. And again, we've had also other ones, Autumn Drive was referenced, that goes back over a decade, those older ones that have continued on were also not included on that map, just so it didn't start to become too many dots. So, as far as additional Woodridge background, based on the questions from last time, tried to pull this information together to give some additional context to the community. And so, maybe, Phil, if you can flip through, maybe go to the next slide, which is the first map, and again, just based on the size, we tried to break it up geographically, so this is the area north of 75th. And again, those lines are approximate, we had to go through, looking at the topography, and hand-place all those lines on the map, but they're generally showing you where those changes in grade happened from property to property. The next slide, Phil, is 75th to 87th, and you are going to start to see a trend as you start to look off on the right-hand side of this map, where we start to head into really what is the newer area of the community, and as you head to the third slide there, Phil, 87th Street South, you see that, again, the number of dots, as well as topographical differences starts to drop off, and again, primarily a function of, you have a lot more storm sewers through these areas, that really alleviates a lot of those drainage concerns, and makes it easier for individuals to try to address those. Any other questions, maybe as it just relates to the additional Woodridge information we Okay. And so, Mayor, if it's okay, we'll go ahead and move to the final set of follow-up information, if that's all right?
Yes, Director Bethel, thank you.
Okay, and so, if you can go one, there you go, thank you, Phil. So, what we had done, based on the conversation and comments, we tried to add some additional clarification, and again, this may or may not be moot, depending on the scope of the program the Mayor and Board want to proceed with, but the first one is, we had talked about, before being eligible, that the property owner had to establish the original property condition. And in retrospect, not necessarily reasonable, because based on what's currently on the property, it may not be possible to put back the original condition. So, we wanted to clarify, really, what was intended is the intent of that original drainage plan. And so, again, the owner may be able to fix their own problem on their own property by putting back what was originally planned to function, and really, the goal and the intent of this provision is that if the owner needs to invest their own funds to put back the baseline, for using public dollars to further try to address that problem. But again, we said condition, I think intent is probably, and again, this is one of the questions trustees have raised last time. The next item was structure, and so, what is meant by flooding of a structure being eligible? I think what we would probably recommend is a structure would mean the residence, as well as an attached or unattached garage. Part of the reason we would say unattached garage, as well, is, one, a garage has greater value than a shed, or patio, or, again, we would recommend excluding, but a garage, and again, all these things, when you're talking about investing public dollars, you're talking about what is the public benefit, in a garage, you could have solvents, as far as gasoline, oil, fertilizer, other things, that if there's a flooding situation, you can create that public safety issue as well. The next item, C, high-water table, whether or not this is considered as a part of a program. Generally, that is not something that we saw in the other communities' programs, and I would suspect the reason why, is it very difficult, if not impossible, to determine the exact presence and location of a high-water table? I think anecdotally, we know there's areas in town where we tend to run into issues if we're doing roadwork, or where we've done underdrains in the roadway, but there's no official mapping that the state, or county, or village has to map that out. So, it's one of those, as far as measuring and quantifying that, if you're trying to equitatively allow participation in the program, it would be difficult to do so on that factor. Next slide, Phil. Kind of going back to what we were talking about earlier, again, you do see varying eligibility requirements in those other communities of, is it two properties, three properties, is it 48 hours, is it 72 hours, is it flooding, is it just generally saying public safety? Again, I think the Mayor and Board, really, you can set whatever parameters you want for eligibility that you think are appropriate, it's just sticking to the, there needs to be some type of public benefit, and that we would recommend really just some measurable or quantifiable standard for eligibility. This last one, on E, on cost-sharing limits, kind of going to what we were talking about earlier, was really, again, if it's in a group, is it capped by a project between those groups of properties? Or, again, if there's a desire, and the Mayor and Board can certainly do that, that it's individual properties could qualify based on whatever that public benefit standard is that's set up, that it's set up, really, a project-by-project basis that a property owner could do. And so, generally, what we had laid out was four categories, rain gardens and swales, generally cheaper, easier to do, and don't require a lot of engineering and follow-up, and that $500, or $250 from the village, $250 from the property owner. If there was a swale or berm, up to $1,500, $750 from the village. It starts to become more costly when you're doing underdrain or storm sewer, so in that case, up to $1,750 from the village, and in that case, being clear, that includes, you normally need a swale on top of the storm sewer, but if you're doing the excavation, you can put that swale in place, so it wouldn't be 1,750 plus the 750 above, with the 1,750 in total, as the village's 50% contribution. And then, also leaving a fourth category of other improvements, on a case-by-case basis, but again, not to exceed that highest tier of 1,750 from the village. So, there's a lot of ways to slice that up in terms of operating the program, but it maybe is a different way if the Mayor and Board were more comfortable, they think it gave a little bit more framework for residents and limited villages' costs, kind of by area, you know what you're working into versus for just a project, whatever that might entail. So, that is probably, again, as far as the, and I guess Commissioner Allwin, is there anything else to add that we didn't hit on that you wanted to clarify?
No, I don't think so, I think we pretty much hit on all the pieces.
Administrator Stonish, is there anything else maybe to add in that? Or Mayor, if there's other things you want us to try to speak to now, or if you wanted to open it up for questions before we get to requesting feedback on those couple of
I would like to ask my fellow board members if they have any other questions at this time.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, please, Trustee Abbott.
Yeah, I had a question for Chris. So, just so I'm clear, nobody would have to show to be eligible for any of these options that the village had actually caused the problem or made it worse, am I correct?
I don't know if there's really, I'm not aware of situations, maybe could you provide an example of when you're saying the village has caused the situation?
Just that we did something to make, you know, that we did something either on a right-of-way, or something to change the topography, or the slopage?
Yeah, I think, maybe we did have a good example, if we go back in the past, when we were talking about the history of the village's response to drainage concerns, I mean, we did have an issue where the village found an old utility, it hadn't been abandoned correctly, and when we properly addressed And when we properly addressed that issue, it created a drainage issue on the neighbor's yard. Um, and in part, the neighbor had also done some things to their own property. And so, you know, we entered into, to some cost sharing to kind of cover what the village had, had changed. Um, typically, I don't know if we've really run into that situation. And Eric, I don't know if you have some examples where the village has caused or created a, uh, an issue?
Yeah, I'm unaware of any, um, any situations where we, you know, the, the, the example that you had brought up was pretty much the only one where we, you know, where we had basically major infiltration into the, into the sanitary system. And, and when we rectified that, it did create a little bit of an issue. But, um, beyond that, I'm unaware of any that, uh, where, where there's instances like that.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? If I could, um, I would like to, uh, check with our village administrator, please. Um, do we have any public comments that we've received?
Yes, Mayor, we received prior to the meeting, uh, three public comments. Copies have been provided to all the, uh, the board members. And these comments will be entered into public records. One is from Ron Bradley, made reference to this agenda item. He lives on Autumn Drive. Uh, the other is from Mr. Ron Potempa, also a resident of Autumn Drive. And the last public comment is, uh, from Mr. Don Blair, also a resident of Autumn Drive. Uh, and then I'll ask, uh, Village Planner Green if we have any members of the public in the, uh, in the queue who wish to make a public comment via Zoom.
Yes, thank you so much.
We have, uh, nobody at this time.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions from my fellow board members? Hearing no one, I, I would like to, uh, maybe just at this point, ask, is there something or anything or further information that you may need or research? Um, that any board member would, uh, like to ask staff for?
Madam Mayor?
Yes, please, Trustee Martinez.
Um, I think the overall project is, uh, is a good project to proceed with. Um, reviewing what we have, what we haven't done over the last many years is a good thing to do. But I think as a village, we need to look at total general rule of thumb and then potential exception, exceptions to that rule of thumb. Uh, I think as we're going to maybe revise or create a new, uh, policy for this type of situations, uh, we should look very carefully, should we share the cost with one, two, or three properties? Or should we just speak to the affected property period? Um, and at this point, I think it should be a, a board discussion more than anything else. Uh, and then look at what are the causes for the issues that are, are being faced? You know, I hear of the big drops of 20, 30 feet in some of the areas. I, I myself live in a property that drops 25 feet from where I live to Route 53. So I know exactly what drops are, uh, from elevations. Uh, but I fortunately haven't had the issues that other people have faced. And I think we need to look at this two ways. One, as a total, uh, program that we can, uh, apply across the whole village. And then we should look with, look within that, at specific circumstances that may be creating a bigger problem, and how we can solve that and maybe co-, uh, assist the property owner with.
Thank you, thank you very much. Anyone else, please?
I'm not sure if Director Oletto is with us. This might be a question for Administrator Stonich. If we create this money or we create this project, where do the funds come from? Is this something that when we created the budget for this calendar year, there's a set aside for this type of project? Or is this something a reallocation of funds? Um, and is this something where just budget-wise, being, you know, fiscally sound, we need to create a cap once we figure out if we're going forward?
Certainly, Trustee Page, I can answer that. Uh, you know, I think staff's recommendation is you probably, the board would want to, if you want to move forward with this type of program, it might be who the, the board to set some sort of cap, establish an annual budget, much like you, you did for, in previous years for some of the small business grants, where there's an allocation each year, um, and establish a gr-, a, a cap on the overall amount. Um, and in terms of where you would budget it from, um, my suggestion would be probably the, the capital program. But being that these are small dollars, um, you know, it might be a kind of a stormwater general fund type expense potentially. Director Bethel, I'll ask you to weigh in too on that.
Yeah, I think our other cost sharing programs for like tree share is just, and again, smaller dollar amounts similar to here in forestry. Um, overhead sewers is in, uh, sanitary services. So yeah, probably a, a line item in, uh, the stormwater, uh, uh, program. Um, if it was something the mayor and board wanted to implement it this year, I mean, we can certainly kind of reevaluate, you know, capital projects that might not be moving forward or operational funds that might be available to, uh, to put toward it, uh, as well.
Thank you, Director Bethel. Any other board members? Comments, questions, feedback?
Madam Mayor, I have a comment.
Yes, please, Trustee Hendricks.
So from my perspective, are, are my concern with this, uh, program is just the fact that you're using tax dollars on private property? So similar to like if you're sewer or you have sewer issues or some kind of other, uh, breakdown on your property, the village is responsible, once it's on village property. Anything that is on your private property, you're responsible for. Um, so the concern is, is that, you know, once you start doing improvements or providing money for private property, i- it can be a slippery slope and where does it end? So, uh, I, I, I just fundamentally wouldn't support any program. Um, I, I just don't see, uh, why the village would take on that responsibility. And in addition, like I think Trustee Abbott had stated, uh, or was questioning towards, um, regarding if, if it's the, if it's something that the village caused, I can totally understand why we would be responsible and would need to repair it. But other than those type of situations, I don't see, um, uh, the benefit for this program.
Thank you very much, Trustee Hendricks. Anyone else, please?
Madam Mayor?
Yes, please, Trustee Abbott.
Yeah, I, I agree with, uh, Trustee Hendricks. I, I'm also not in favor of this, um, for a variety of reasons. One, we, I think last year our deficit was about a million dollars. Um, we're going to have a deficit in the coming fiscal year. Uh, so I don't have, I don't understand where the money would be coming from, other than raising taxes to pay for this program. Um, secondly, I have concerns over the amount of staff time. Uh, we're trying to be a lean organization and I think, uh, our staff is, is working, you know, at full capacity now. I don't think they can really absorb this additional, uh, amount of work. And I don't want to see them needing additional staff to be hired to help fulfill this. Um, and also I can go back to what Trustee Hendricks said. This is something on private property that we didn't do. I have a hard time endorsing a program where I'm going to tell residents of Woodridge, you've got to pay tax dollars to the village. And we're going to give it to particular homeowners who happen to have drainage issues on their property that we didn't cause. Uh, that just seems fundamentally unfair to me. Um, so, you know, for those reasons, and obviously I've got, you know, I still think this could also break bad that we could wind up having a lot of unhappy residents if they don't like our decisions. Um, you could have, you could be pitting neighbors against neighbors. If three people are getting together to do something and one backs out and then the other two are mad at him. I mean, I really, I just don't see the potential benefits outweighing all of negatives. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Abbott. Anyone else, please?
I want to follow up on Trustee Hendricks' point. This might be a question for Attorney Pat. What is our liability? Let's say we do a 50/50 cost share. We agree to put a swale in and it doesn't solve the problem. Let's say it makes the problem worse. What is the village's liability?
Well, there's a couple of different aspects to that, Trustee Page. Uh, first of all, I'd say that, um, uh, I would not recommend doing this, uh, type of program without a, uh, release of liability in a waiver from the, uh, property owners. Uh, however, if the village made the improvement and made the improvement poorly, right? Like, you know, it would have worked if we hadn't done such a bad job in doing it. Then I would say that there probably could be some liability. But of course, that's also limited by tort immunity, uh, and, and other factors. So, um, yes, it, it's definitely a possibility that, uh, if we put in an improvement and it didn't take, there could be some, uh, hard feelings and perhaps, uh, a, a cause of action. But I would say again, contracting with anybody as part of this program would have to, uh, uh, make clear that the village is making no guarantees or warranties about the efficacy of the, uh, of the improvement. And then our liability would should be and would be limited to, uh, us putting the improvement in, in a proper and working light manner.
If I may, Trustee Page, to add on to that, uh, that for the reasons Attorney Pat has mentioned, uh, the way, um, Director Bethel and, uh, Mr. Alwyn have proposed, it would be for the property owners to, uh, collaborate amongst each other and to, um, get a contract together with their independent contractor in which the village would not be overseeing, overseeing the contract or commissioning the contract, but merely doing a reimbursement of cost via grant.
Thank you. Anyone else, please? I think I'd like to follow up with, um, just asking if anyone, any board member, and maybe we need some more information here, but would you be supportive of some type of engineering study? Um, taking a look at these areas that have been, um, highlighted to us that have, um, water issues? Um, but do it in some type of a plan, maybe starting with one or two, take a look? And if I could have further information on, um, and maybe just to clarify, what an engineering study is, what it would do and the cost of an engineering study?
Mayor Cunningham, is that a question directed to staff?
Yes.
Yes, so, um, I'll defer to Director Bethel here, but it, we, there could be two ways at it. One is kind of a, more or less a higher level study, an initial feasibility study, where, um, it would be kind of assessing the current conditions, evaluating what might be the problem, and then offering some very conceptual, um, solutions with some cost ranges of what might, um, what might mitigate some of the issues that are occurring in that neighborhood, right? Uh, neighborhood A, B, or C. Um, so it'd be more of a, uh, phase one type, uh, type study. Uh, but Director Bethel, do you want to maybe elaborate on that a little bit?
Yeah, Administrator Stonich, I think you, you pretty well covered it there. I think what we're trying to do is looking at, you know, surveying data to, to get an idea of what's happening. What area, uh, of drainage is, is coming to the area? What kind of impervious do you have there? Existing storm sewers, detention basins, um, access in terms of, uh, buildings, properties, improvements, easements? Um, and as Administrator Stonich said, kind of a high level, what could you fit here? Where could it go? What level of benefit might you get? Um, and so again, it, it's, it's somewhat of a, of a loaded question because the cost will be dictated by kind of the area you're talking about and how large it is and kind of the complexities of it. But generally, that higher level study, and you're probably talking five to $7,500, I would, I would guess. Now granted, if you go forward, i- it's not lost funds because that just kind of makes the actual final design easier because you, you're kind of, you've already got your general path charted, uh, charted out.
So doing some type of engineering study at first could help us to, is one, um, determine what can be done, what should be done, um, you know, and help us to address these problems? Because I, I'm hearing from residents and neighbors that have had water situations and it has been a long road for them. Um, and, you know, you don't know if it goes back to, you know, when the houses were built after, if people have added things on their property or your neighbors have. There's lots of things that could be impacting. Um, so I'm just curious if that was an option and what it would look like in the, you know, costs, um, that it would maybe, uh, um, you know, what the benefits could be. Um, so it could be to address resident concerns. Um, and also, would it tell us how many properties could benefit from any type of mitigation that's being done and the cost benefit?
Absolutely. I, I think maybe the one caveat I, I should clarify though, because how we, that's how we commonly approach most of the larger storm sewer and stormwater improvement projects that we, that we do to make sure, you know, there is a kind of an achievable and cost-effective solution. But I, I think the study in this case become, in any of these situations, probably comes a little bit more complex because it's, it's private property and that there aren't easements, there isn't. Uh, so that kind of becomes a part of the evaluation as well. But absolutely, Mayor, the end goal is, you're trying to come up with what is the concept? What is the cost range? And what is the, the ultimate benefit you would get from doing the, doing the work?
Okay, thank you so much, Director Bethel. I think at this point, um, we do need to find out from each, uh, of the trustees that have not let us know, kind of where you're at. Um, what are your thoughts on this as we decide how we make our next steps? So is anyone, please, uh, willing to share where you're at currently?
Madam Mayor?
Yes, please, Trustee Martinez.
Um, I'm just going to suggest or, or comment to your idea of the engineering study. I think that may be a good approach to follow, especially if we keep it within $7,500. And we should have that study focused on specific areas of the village that may be, may be causing problems. That would also create the opportunity to identify what the cost would be to fix some of those problems. And maybe the, the reason for some of the problems. So I'm supported of, of proceeding with a engineering study that oversees what we're talking about.
Thank you very much, Trustee Martinez.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, please, Trustee Page.
I could support an engineering study as long as it's a wide swath of the village so that we're looking at all of the different areas that were shown on the map and that it's something that we can see has a community-wide benefit. That is something I could support. I could support this program as a pilot for one year. It's not something we've done before. So a small dollar pilot of this program to see for 2021 how it goes and if this is something we should budget for. I'm nervous because this clearly wasn't a budget item when we approved the budget. And to Trustee Abbott's point, where are the dollars coming from? And when you start reallocating what is lost in the process because of the reallocation? So that, that part is why I say small dollar pilot.
Thank you very much. Excellent point on the pilot, um, program. Um, if I could go back to Trustee Martinez, um, how do you feel on the creation of a pilot program? If I could go back to Trustee Martinez, how do you feel on the creation of a pilot program?
In favor of that. Obviously, there's a few questions that I'm not totally answered yet. So maybe the program will help answer some of those questions and maybe the engineering study will assist on that. I think we also have other issues that should be discussed on a different level for specific homeowners.
Okay, thank you very much. And if I could just ask both Trustee Hendricks, Trustee Abbott, any comments on an engineering study and the creating, creation, excuse me, of a pilot program?
Madam Mayor?
Yes, please, Trustee.
Yeah, I'm against both.
Trustee Hendricks?
Madam Mayor, yeah, I I think the, my concern is just explaining where tax dollars are going and that they are going towards private property. I would be, you know, support having like a preferred engineering company that we could have that can, you know, that we can recommend to provide a service to the residents and say, you know what, we've kind of vetted these guys. We're not 100% sure. But, you know, they're they're a company that you can use. And then in regards to the pilot program, my only concern is the optics on that. And it, obviously, because one of these properties could be affiliated with, you know, has someone who's on the board of the of the village. You know, and let me clarify, obviously, the trustee has not been involved in this at all, but the optics on that could, I don't think would be favorable to the public from from their point of view.
Thank you, Trustee Hendricks. Any feedback or further comments from any trustee? Okay, thank you very much, everyone. Director Bethel and Commissioner Alwyn and our village administrator, we thank you very much for the presentation. All the excellent works and information has been provided. We thank you so much for that. If there is nothing further, I would like to ask for a motion to adjourn our study session, please.
Come on.
Second, please.
Second.
Thank you very much. All those in favor, please sign aye.
Aye.
The time is 6:53 PM. We will adjourn and we will be coming back shortly for our village board meeting at 7:00. Thank you all very much.
All right, you should all have your second invitations if anybody doesn't let me know.
Thank you, Phil.